Come on.
Perry.
Do you want to... Do you want it? Uh, do you want it? Uh. Uh. So, uh. I have my daughter here, so, um, I don't know if you can see this all. I'm going through this, and I don't know if you can see.
Your mom.
I don't know if you can hear me. Yeah, I'll get that. I'm going to come on. Good luck.
How are you? How are you? I'm glad you're up.
Yeah, yeah, I just didn't know. I thought.
Sorry, sorry.
Please.
I know. Wow. There's a person right in front of you. Maybe it's not that loud. Perry, just cut it out. Hi. You know, yeah. Yes. Yeah. Thank you. I'm like, let's make her, let's make her bear. Oh, yes, sir. Did you hear your feet out? They don't beat that. That was... Well. What if you... So, I mean, you can just go back here. You can put one of them back here. Is that... I can feel it too, like a flower. Right? Or like, maybe. I can feel that it can be, like, flowers are running. Yeah. Bye. Bye. Sorry, I'm ready for... It's very well. Where's the soccer? Right.
I don't know. I can't...
Right. That's not even right now. I was going on the wrong. Oh. I don't know. I don't know.
All right, good evening. We're going to get started tonight. Um, we're going to... For those that, uh, never been to a board meeting, it's going to take a little while to go through the, uh, the roll call, but we'll start over here with Jamie and work our way over.
John, can I... Drew, it's here.
Tom, you want to say your name?
Nathan Faye.
Mike Jerraborkan.
Craig Marty.
Start down here. Say your name.
Very good.
Very good. You're a player.
Very good. Very talented. Thank you so much. Here, here, I will. Okay.
You don't give it... Gosh, what the hell?
Get the look on it. Let's see now.
Check over. Deep right.
Why? Sure. So, you have her.
Got her.
I mean, if you need her. Okay.
You want it?
Very hot. One. Jennifer, my wife.
Brian Warkman. Check ball.
Ready or not.
Breaks in.
Thank you. Which one? Yeah. I know. Tell it. Sherry, just have it in part. And then, for, every year.
Miss anybody? I know that's super painful, but thank you. Um, you got it. Oops, sorry.
Aaron Bow.
Very good one. Thank you. Uh, we got the flag over here. We're in stand for the flag allegiance. Flag allegiance.
The flag. In the United States of America. It's due to the Father of British Commons. On a nation under God, even as long. For the repeating justice for all.
Thank you. You want to start off with, uh, good news?
I'll... Yes. My pleasure, Megan. Can you step out here a minute? My pleasure. We're walking this way. My pleasure to introduce Megan Doan. Uh, Megan grew up in Taylor Ridge. Graduated from Rock Ridge in 2006. Uh, she attended Western Illinois University. The Western. Graduated in 2018, earning her bachelor's degree in elementary education with middle school endorsements in math, language arts, and social studies. Uh, Megan taught sixth grade math for four years. Most recently taught fourth grade for the past six years. She earned her master's degree in teaching and leadership in 2015. Megan and her husband Alex have two young daughters, Charlie, five, Lily, four. She's excited to be starting kindergarten with her daughter Charlie and having Lily join them the following year. Uh, in their spare time, they enjoy camping, boating, and traveling together as a family. Megan Doan, Taylor Ridge Elementary Kindergarten. Really? Kindergarten. Welcome.
Take the floor. Let's go. We've got Connor and Tyler.
My pleasure tonight to introduce our newest member in the vocational department, Connor Fishkin. Graduated from Newark, Illinois. He started at Joliet Junior College and transferred to the University of Illinois-Champaign. He completed his bachelor's degree this spring with student teaching in agricultural leadership and education. For the last six years, Connor's had a variety of different jobs. Two of them being the biggest are dairy farmer and a contractor of Lily Holmes. Outside of the classroom, Connor enjoys working in the woodshop, making pieces of furniture. Connor's newly married. And he's back over. And he's very excited to start the school year off here at Rock Ridge. He's looking forward to creating lasting relationships within our community.
All right. Uh, we're going to move on to public comments. A couple of notes real quick. Uh, for those on YouTube, it's incredibly hard to hear. So if you're going to speak, I ask that you come down and get as most of the equipment as you can so that the folks that are watching live are, uh, can hear you. Uh, each individual will be limited to five minutes. We're also going to be asking for you to state your name and your address for the record before you begin speaking. And beyond that, uh, we're here to listen. We've got, uh, questions that I think that you'll have that will naturally come out of our discussion later on in the meeting. And we also have questions that we still have to seek a legal opinion on. The information, uh, keeps coming at us at mod three. We've got, uh, new documents even yet today. So I apologize to the public. We won't have every answer for you tonight, but I know Perry's commitment is in an FAQ document out to the entire, uh, district when we have those answers. So with that, I open the floor to anyone that'd like to make a public comment. Come on down.
In front of the camera?
Yeah, you're fine. As long as you're talking somewhere.
There's no microphone there.
What's that?
We don't have a microphone.
No. No, go belly reach.
Okay. Well, first I would just like to point out one thing. If, um...
Sorry, can you say your name?
Oh, yeah, yeah. My name is Joy Carter. Uh, my address is 1402 833rd Avenue, West Taylor Ridge, Illinois. I am a teacher at the high school, Spanish teacher, and I'm the mother of two high school girls. Um, first I just wanted to point out that we couldn't hear Perry when he was speaking because of his mask. That's exactly what happens in the classroom. We could hear Nathan perfectly well. And that just, when you have to yell as a teacher with a mask on, it creates even more CO2. And then you literally can't feel... You feel like you can't breathe because you have to yell to talk. Uh, just, I thought that was the perfect introduction for it. Um, I'm sorry, I'm a little nervous. Um, first I just wanted to start by, um, reading the Fourteenth Amendment, um, section one of the U.S. Constitution, which I think we, we can all agree that the U.S. Constitution is the basis for our country and our freedoms. So I just wanted to read it really quickly. Just section one. "All persons born or naturalized in the United States and subject to the jurisdiction thereof are citizens of the United States and of the state wherein they reside. No state shall make or enforce any law which shall abridge the privileges or immunities of citizens of the United States, nor shall any state deprive any person of life, liberty, or property without due process of law, nor deny any person within its jurisdiction the equal protection of the laws." And I just highlighted in my notes that says, "nor shall any state deprive any person of life or liberty." And then I looked up liberty, and it says, "the state of being free within society from oppressive restrictions." I just thought that was a good way to start. And, um, I'm going to try and be as concise as possible so I can stay within that five minutes. And I'm going to, um, address... And just first want to say the most respect for my board members. I know this is an extremely, extremely difficult situation for you. Um, and so I'm... No, I want to show that I have the most respect for each one of you. Um, but I wanted to talk about the, um, Illinois Emergency Management Agency Act, which is what the governor, um, announced his mandate under. This gave him the authority to do this. Um, I... We ran this document by Neil because I wanted Neil Anderson because I wanted to make sure it was factual. I don't want to, like, be spreading any false information. Um, and he said it was. Um, so I'm going to... I will refer to the Illinois Emergency Management Agency Act as IEMAA. So the IEMAA contains no enforcement mechanisms to the mandates. The... It does not give the governor authority to create new regulations. And the governor's own staff conceded this point in a brief they put out in March 2020. Um, "The Emergency Management Agency Act gives the governor the power to suspend statutes prescribing procedures for conduct of state business or orders, rules, and regulations of any state agency. The Act does not, however, give the governor the authority to create new regulations. Therefore, enforcement mechanisms for the governor's executive orders must either be found in the Emergency Management Act or in existing statutes or regulations." Hopefully that's making sense. I had to study this a while before I could understand this. But, um, so it base... We're going to base things on current established statutory powers that are already in place. The Act itself is silent on enforcement, and there is no existing law that is specific to enforcement. So therefore, um, no enforcement mechanism exists. That is why the House Bill 2789 is being pursued in the current General Assembly. You might have heard... Has anybody heard of House Bill 2789? And this would be the vehicle that would give them authority to enforce. Um, but this is still pending. This is not passed. Therefore, logically, you wouldn't be able to enforce something because you haven't gotten the power to do so. Um, the governor will not address this issue. He wants... I'm sure he's trying to get this passed as quickly as possible. Um, so therefore, our school board is not required to enforce a mandate, a mask mandate issued by the governor on these grounds. Um, just to address some major concerns of there's the liability. Liability is everything because it creates fear. Fear creates compliance. So it's... But if you think about this logically, there's no legal liability for ignoring a non-legally binding mandate. So, um, civil... What about civil liability? Let's think about civil liability logically. This is probably something the state would not pursue against an individual or district. A person or public or private school being sued successfully for someone contracting a highly transmittable airborne virus in a public place is absolutely without precedent and impossible to prove. Can you imagine trying to prove this student got COVIDed at Rock Ridge because they came into contact with this other student who also attended Rock Ridge? But has that student been anywhere outside of the school? Have they gotten groceries brought into their house? Have they walked down the street and passed by somebody? So you can see that how this would ever be proven is it seems... If you think about it logically, it seems like it's next to zero. And there is no precedent of this ever happening, not even just in the United States, but in the world. There is no precedent of anybody suing and, and finding this person caused my virus that I was harmed from. Um, what about losing recognition as a school? Okay, ISB... Okay, can I say ISB? That's the Illinois State Board of Education.
Enjoying me in the interruption? And you keep going. I just want to talk to another people I want to talk to.
Would you guys mind if I finished for two minutes?
That's fine.
Okay.
That's fine.
Thank you. Yes. I totally understand. I know that you have to do that. Okay. Um, "ISB cannot strip a school's recognition for ignoring a non-legally binding mandate." This is... Remember, this is why House Bill 2789 is in... Trying to be... Trying to be passed because the governor wants to be able to enforce his mandates. He doesn't have that right now. Okay, um, "If a school stripped the funding and recognition of Rock Ridge, what would the state do with the students?" Under Article 10 of the Illinois Constitution, it requires free elementary and secondary education to every single student. So if they're going to remove them from here, what are you going to do? Because you are required to give my child a free education. Can you imagine the logistics of this? And this is... If Rock Ridge were closed down, where would these kids go? They can't remote learn. That is not... ISB says there will be no remote learning unless you medically qualify to remote learn. You have to have a doctor's note. Otherwise, there is no... You cannot remote learn. And except in the case of quarantine, um, you, you are allowed to do that then. But so a remote option is out. Um, then, see, this is if Mercer County, Surrard... If we all of the school boards stood up, what would they do with the children? What would they do? They must provide an education. It cannot be remote. Are... Is the governor going to tell the state, "We are not going to educate these children"? You can't do that. Um, okay. I'm sorry, I'm going on too long. I'm going to cut it short. Um, "ISB can, in certain limited circumstances, sanction a school for not complying with a mandate under the umbrella of school code." Um, however, ignoring a non-legally binding mandate does not meet that threshold. And any sanction would require due process, right? Due process. You have to go through all the steps. You have to go through the law. You have to represent each individual fairly. Um, so I'm almost done. The facts and legal authority are on our side. They are on our side. We can't make fear-based decisions any longer. So, um, that ends my portion. I just want to say, we really need to stick together on this. Where will it stop? And Don Dean, thank you for making me realize I need to do something. Do I want my kids wearing masks? No. So I better step up and do something about it. And that's my point. Okay.
Hi, my name is Elena Carter. Uh, I will be a junior at Rock Ridge. My address is 14028 133rd Avenue West, Taylor Ridge, Illinois. Uh, I'm speaking tonight as a student of Rock Ridge High School. I would like you to consider... I would like you to consider defying the mask mandate. I do not want to sit in school for seven hours a day with a mask on. I'm lucky I don't have to ride the bus because I live across the street, but the kids who do will have to be wearing masks for around eight hours or more a day. Wearing my mask makes me feel like I cannot get enough oxygen. It's hard to focus, and it's hard to even walk through the halls. Uh, I'm constantly thinking about when the next time is that I'll be able to slip my mask down without anybody noticing. Uh, I know we are not supposed to do that, but I'm guilty of it because it's hard. Uh, it makes me feel panicky and claustrophobic. And I'm trying not to get yelled at by teachers and aides, which I have been multiple times. And I have been trying my hardest to keep my mask up, but it is hard to not be able to breathe well. Uh, I find it hard to focus in class, and I'm constantly trying to get as much air as I can without risking other people, their safety or their opinion. Last year, we only had to be in school for about five and a half hours, but this year we'll be in school for seven hours a day. If we ride the bus or participate in other sports, this could mean we wear masks for nine or more hours a day. I've gotten home from cheering at football events at like 10. It... That wasn't riding the bus. So the bus gets home even later possibly. Uh, you, the school board, are a defense system against things like this. We can't fight this on our own. I just ask that you would let us not wear masks for seven to nine hours every day and help get us back to normal life. We're counting on you to fight for us because we don't, as students, don't have the power to do that. Thank you for your time and consideration.
My name is Brayden Deam. I'm a senior. My address is 925 13th Street, Core East, Antillusia, Illinois. I've been a student at Rock Ridge my entire life. I am not much of a public speaking guy, but I wanted to come... I wanted to just speak tonight to ask you to please let us finally go back to our normal school year. I'm the third senior class that has had to deal with COVID. I have been all over the country this summer playing football, and I have not had to wear a mask once other than the last time I wore a mask was May during school. Nothing about having to wear a mask feels normal, and it doesn't make any sense when we... All we do is everywhere else, we don't have to wear a mask. We just want a... We just want a normal school year with football, homecoming, basketball, band, choir, show choir, and everything else that we would be allowed to have on a normal year. We had a prom last year, and practically the entire school was at the prom, and nobody got sick. Please think about what this is doing to us and give us the choice to go back. Give us the choice back to us and our parents. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Nathan Metrikas. I'm going to be a senior at, uh, Rock Ridge, and my address is 13001 204th Street West, Illinois City, Illinois. Uh, I wanted to speak tonight to encourage the school board to vote against the mask mandate. After a year and a half of abnormal learning, I just wanted to have a normal school year. Uh, I'm sure all the students were looking forward to that this year because that's what we expected it to go to. Uh, after a year and a half of abnormal... Oh, I don't want to think... Or I don't want... I don't think students should have to go through another year of masks and quarantines. I want, uh, to go to school, talk to my friends, see their smiles. Also, I want to be able to hear my teachers, see their faces. It makes it a whole lot easier to learn because a lot of listening is based off of lip reading. But school isn't only for education. It's also about social interaction with your students around you. A big part of social interaction is facial expressions. And half the time when you're walking down the hallway, you can't even tell if somebody's smiling at you or just going about their day. Um, some of the things I asked are, "Is it good for me to, uh, be breathing in my CO2 all day? What are the long-term effects of this, and could this hurt me in the future?" Um, adding on to what Brayden said, we've gone this whole summer not wearing masks in any other public place. So why would we wear masks in school when teenagers are the lowest at risk? Uh, I hope you take these things into your consideration when making your decision, and thank you for your time.
Come on down.
I'm trying to come down. I just wanted to say that I'm here. I'm getting... For them. And I firmly believe this is not... Everybody else has helped us not do this. That's all I have. Thanks.
Come on down.
My name is Heather Sparks. My address is 13627 138th Street West, Taylor Ridge. I am the mother of an incoming eighth grader who was excited to start school until the mask mandate came out. And now she wants nothing to do with school. I couldn't even bring her to come tonight. She wants nothing to do with school now. I've been very passionate about this, and I feel... I know the board is in a tough position. I've been very passionate about this, and I feel, I know the board is in a tough position, but I want you guys to realize that as parents, we are responsible for our children's and the choices that they make that we make for them. I was thinking a lot when Dawn was talking to me and going through the stuff, so I want to thank you for encouraging me as well for making this statement. I got to thinking, how can we make this a positive for our kids? In a world that is so divided, why can't we teach our kids a valuable lesson that it is okay to make a personal choice that is different from somebody else? And it's okay, just respect it and respect your choice. So say no to the mask mandate and allow the kids and parents to make their personal choice, and let's teach our kids to respect that it is okay to have a difference of opinion. Thank you.
Anyone else? My name is Rudy Roxxel. I live in Illinois City, Illinois. Thank you, gentlemen, for your work. I have two sons who graduated from here. I am an alumni. I have a daughter. This is ludicrous. I'd like to know, as board members and superintendents and principals, have you been advised from a legal counsel from Rock Ridge as how to obtain to handle a situation? If so, what is the advice to do, and will there be documentation of what you've been advised to do?
I can thank you for your comment, but I will get back to you. I can't provide a response based on the board.
So have you been advised by a legal counsel that Rock Ridge paid for?
I can't respond to that.
Why? I'd like, just, no? If we all took no for an answer, where would we be?
This is a portion of the meeting that's public comments. We're here to listen and gather information. It's not a time.
That's the information I'd like to gather.
Absolutely, me too. But I don't have a response to it.
Very good. Anybody else?
There's a freedom of choice, though. You know, you can go play football, take a chance, ruin in your life. You can go jump out of an airplane. You can do all this, and you can't choose whether you want to wear a mask or not. It makes no sense. You, you know, we're taking our choices. What's next? You know, they're going to make us wear a life jacket because women, period. You can't go on a four-foot pool without a life jacket on because that's a match. Come on, use your head. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Kids are all counting on you. They're up there. I don't know how many kids will come to school board meetings, but I'm coming up to school.
My name's Caleb Mudding. I live at 608 Fifth Avenue Place, Andalusia. And I just want to say tonight that at the beginning of the last board meeting, there's a lot different demeanor with you guys, especially Perry and Nathan. You guys are very excited to come out and tell us everything we wanted to hear because the law is on your side, and you're going to fight this till there's no funding left, or until we lose funding and all these other things. And I just feel like as soon as the law changed, are you backsliding on your decision, or is that still how you feel? You're not going to answer me. Okay.
Thank you. You're happy to come and make public comments, and I'd like to have your name.
You said you were here to gather information when you told the last guy I would just give you some information.
I just asked you to come down so we can get your name and address for the record.
I'm good, just my name, I'm a student of Rock Ridge. I have a name and I don't know.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Feel a little ill-prepared. My name's Lindsay Begann. I'm a registered nurse, and I live at 7106 134th Avenue West, Taylor Ridge, Illinois. I have three children in the Rock Ridge School District. All of them were very excited to return, especially when we got the last info. I understand as board members, you guys are put in a very difficult position. This isn't easy, and I don't envy any one of you. I will say, as a nurse with a basic understanding of viruses, if this was any other virus that we were talking about right now, people would be losing their minds. For example, I'm a dialysis nurse. I'm exposed to a lot of blood and blood products every day. I have to be vaccinated against hepatitis B. It's mandatory for my job, but I have a choice. If I don't want that, then I don't have to work that job. There are other positions that I can work. So there, for me, there's been a choice. I've made the choice. Actually, the choice was made for me as that vaccine was mandated back when I was in school. So thankfully, that wasn't something I had to choose on my own. However, this is all new science with this virus. This is a brand-new vaccine, and while the science of vaccines have not changed, there's no long-term studies. So if this were any other virus, if you were looking at somebody and saying, well, you know, if you, you know, making people wear a sign or anything else, people would be losing their minds. So I'd just like you to take into consideration that, yes, while it is a virus and we don't know much about it yet, and we're learning every day, the survival rates are high, our children, children, the population is the least affected of all populations so far, and even so, when they are getting it, are less and less symptomatic. So I guess that's, that's all I would like to add and to be considered. My thoughts are with you.
I'm Annette Partridge. I live at 609 Second Avenue West in Andalusia. I'm a, I have a, I'm a grandmother, and these two little girls are not going to wear masks going to school. Now that our awful governor has mandated, it's time for you to stand firm against wearing masks. You've got to stand firm. If you do not, more parents are going to decide to homeschool. I'm here tonight to pass out an invitation to all parents to gather and discuss building a homeschool network if our school board lets us down. Wednesday at 11:00 AM, need a set Welcome In Restaurant in Mylan to discuss ideas, share skills, recruit teachers, and basically work together to educate our children for as long as it takes for Rock Ridge to open schools without mask mandates. Please contact myself or Laura Davis. Our contact information is on the flyer I'm going to pass out. It has to stop, you guys. It has to.
My name's Sean Carter. I live at 14028 133rd Avenue West, right over here in Edgerton. I was at the last school board meeting when they discussed, basically saying that they left it, ISB had not really made it, they were agreeing with the CDC. Our board was saying that they agree with the CDC. Everyone was saying they agree with the CDC, based on something that said recommended, okay? When it said recommended, everybody was all on board. Now, Nathan, during that last school board, said that if something changes and ISB, Illinois State Board of Education, who is our governing body, says anything else, then we may have to change and go with that. Well, ISB is contradicting themselves, but ISB is saying that it is recommended that you create a policy. There's nothing in there that says you must create a policy. It says, we recommend that you create a policy. Okay? Well, last board meeting, when the CDC recommended that you wear masks, the board was, we'll ride this until we lose funding. Now that ISB, the governing body, is saying, we recommend that you create a policy, well, there's no mandate that you create a policy, zero. So now we start asking about liability. If ISB, your governing body, is saying, we recommend, but what's going to happen to you if you don't? Where's now standing up saying, well, it says recommend, so we don't have to?
When you say recommend, is recommending that a school policy be made?
Correct. It's recommending that a school policy be made, okay? Correct. Correct. So basically, based off of that, ISB is not demanding, they're not requiring that you create a school policy, a mask policy. It's saying, we recommend that a mask policy be created, okay? And that you use, basically, enforcement and, I'm sorry. Correct. So now my question is, why are we not, now why is the board not standing up saying, now that it still says recommended, it doesn't say we have to, where's the liability? There was no liability when the CDC said it recommended. Why is there liability now when ISB, your governing body, is saying recommended? Okay? I understand that there can be liability in anything. There can be liability if I don't make an arrest on someone for DUI, but yet they hit somebody and I let them go, okay, as a police officer? But I still have the ability to make a choice, okay? I don't have to make that arrest. You do not have to make this policy because it says, it recommends there's a policy. It doesn't say you must make this policy. The next thing I will say is that if, if it's an issue of you're afraid and it has nothing to do, if you're for mask, you're against masks, you don't want masks, but yet you're making a decision based on your fear of your personal liability, there are other options. The other option is to step down. You could step down right now, and this board could appoint somebody who's not afraid to make that decision.
Got time for at least one or two more? Want to?
Chad Tucker. I live at 9306 143rd Street West, Taylor Ridge. I just, you know, you're all here, your teachers, the school board members, pediatricians, the doctors, nurses, and I don't understand how you're here making medical choices about our children. You guys teach, you help our children, that's great. You're not here to make medical choices. We have personal doctors, we have pediatricians for that. My daughter's a healthy girl, she's never had medical issues. Last year, she came here, had to wear a mask, started having headaches. It's going on, to the point where she was having migraines all the time, and we took her to the doctor, took her to the chiro, helped her get help. Really wasn't going away. School ends magically, headaches. But she's dad, I kept saying, it's a mask. I go, I go to school, I put on a mask, I feel like I can't breathe, I start getting headaches. Why would we want to do that to our children? I mean, nobody's talked about the problems with their, our kids. I mean, you know, having headaches, do you do physical labor? I mean, go outside and run around in a mask? I work every day, hard labor, like, we can't wear a mask at my job? Like, you can't breathe through them, you can't work out in a hard-degree weather? We got gym class, we're going to put kids in gym class and have them run laps and, or go outside and play football with a mask on? Like, come on, like, really? Like, I don't understand that. So I'm just here to say that, let's make the right choice here. I mean, my kids were excited to come to school. My four-year-old was excited to come to school. She found out we had to wear a mask. Now she's coming out, and she's, daddy, are you going to the school board meeting? All my kids are like, going to the school board meeting? Come on, we don't want to wear masks, don't want to mask them, us? Common sense here, people. Our kids are the healthiest, most resilient of all of us. Why do we put them through wearing a mask? Cause other issues, headaches, or, you know, even, you know, acne, or you can't, you can't even see if somebody's smiling or happy or depressed, gets walked through the hallway, they're smiling or happy every day. What if they're frowning and they got other issues, so they're unhappy, they're depressed? You can't even tell, they're wearing a mask. I can't even see if you're smiling right now or happy. I can't see none of your facial expressions. Come on, let's get over it. Let's move on with our lives. That's all I got to say.
My name's Heather Quist. My address is 3509 Ninth Street, Rock Island. My son is a Rock Ridge student going into the sixth grade, because this is his father's school district. I came tonight because my son has expressed, he was very excited also, like some of the other students, about coming back to school. And then when the mask mandate came back, along with, I'm assuming, the glove mandate with playing sports on the playground and stuff, he's pretty much told me he's making his choice by not getting out of bed. He doesn't want to come back to school. He has always been a good student, and he was very eager to learn through this school district. He has become inclusive and depressed with the idea of coming back into your school district. Sorry, I get very emotional about this. As parents, we need to be able to make this choice for our kids. He needs to have a normal school year. Coming into a middle school where he's learning to transfer classes, meet other kids that are, haven't been in the same school, and teachers that are different, per period. He needs to be able to see facial expression. He needs to learn the social cues when you're walking down a hall, when you need to move, when you can stay where you are, and a lot of that comes from the face. You guys need to stand up for the kids, or let us stand up for the kids now. This is not fair that the governor can just say, well, change my mind. These kids aren't the ones getting sick. Those who are getting sick are vaccinated. It's personal choice at this point. We can decide everything else in our lives, but we can't decide if we're going to cover our nose and our mouth and our hands when we dribble a basketball on the playground. That's all I have to say.
My name is Yenay Stevens. Address is 2609 113th Avenue Court West. I have a sophomore and a kindergartner in this district, and we are all here representing our kids. There are students here representing the student body, and you guys represent us. You are obligated to make your decisions based on what we feel is best for this school district and for our kids. It is a personal choice if you choose to wear a mask, if you want your kids to wear a mask. That should be our choice. It should not be your choice, it should not be the governor's choice, and that should not be anybody else's choice but us and our kids. You represent us, and that's what you need to keep in mind.
State Senator Neil Anderson. I live at 1428 11th Avenue East in Andalusia. Wanted to come here tonight, change, a little change of pace from what some of the parents have been talking about. I want to talk about process to you guys, or lack thereof. For the, and I want, I'm asking for your help, I'm asking for help of the parents here. For the past 17 months, the governor has take, take a go-it-alone approach, and in my opinion, it's 17 months too long. I'm not here to tell you guys how to vote tonight. That's not why I'm here. That's not my job, that's your job and your job alone. You were elected to make decisions that's best for this school district based on the constituents that elected you, and that is these parents and their kids. You being here tonight, yet again, is not the problem, but yet a symptom of the governor's rule-by-fiat approach. Whether you're Democrat, Republican, or Independent, it doesn't matter. What matters is what we all learned in civics class when we were kids, and that is that we live in a, in a constitutional republic that is made up of three, three co-equal branches of government, not one. As I said before, I ask you tonight for your help. I'm not here to convince you on either side of the issue, mask, no mask, that's not why I'm here tonight. I'm here to support your decision as a local school board, where decisions like this should lie. I've spent almost two terms as your state senator, and time and time again, I've voted against mandates that have been brought up in Springfield that come down on our local governments and our school boards. It shouldn't be a mandate. It shouldn't be made by one man that has never sat foot in this school district. I guarantee, if you asked the governor today where Rock Ridge is, he wouldn't have any idea. This decision is for the school board. One year ago, actually over a year ago, I introduced legislation in the state of Illinois that would take away the governor's unilateral power and give it back to you where it belongs. Unfortunately, to this day, that bill sits, still sits in a subcommittee where the majority party refuses to call it for a vote. So today, I have brought for you guys a resolution that I have drafted. Now, this resolution... Now this resolution will go to any school district that wants it. You can use it word for word, you can use it as a template to fit your district. The resolution is asking the governor to relinquish his power that he's been doing and give it back to the school district. I ask you to use it, tweak it, make it yours, and God willing, vote on it. And God willing, a bunch of school districts around this state take up this same resolution and vote on it to send a message to the governor that says, we know what's best for our kids in our district, not you. As I've said before, not here to tell you how to vote tonight. I know you guys have a lot on your shoulders. Believe me, I understand. Every vote that an elected official takes has its goods, its bads. They all have consequences. I'll leave you with this. In my experience, every vote that I've taken, if you listen to both sides and vote with how your constituents feel, you usually end up on the right side of the issue. Thank you.
Who wants to follow up with that? We're gonna close down public comments this time and move on to the consent agenda. Is there anything that, anyone needs removed from the consent agenda? Hearing none, can I get a motion approved if some agenda is presented? Greg?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Tom? You hear Tom? Steve?
Yes.
Aaron?
Derek?
I vote yes. No presentations, moving on to financial reports.
Alright, so you guys have a copy of the second draft of our budget. And we have very little change from last month's draft. The adjustments presented in the second draft are those in the salary account that we, those are where we placed our staff members in their correct location for this upcoming school year. So very minimal changes there. And then we also adjusted the expenditures in the operation maintenance fund to reflect the total funds available in that budget as we have just formally done. We're gonna start with the monthly financial statement for July. So as we talked about last month, that deferred revenue has now been reported revenue. And you can see that those balances are now zero. And the accounts payable balances are also zero. So we only have accrued payroll liabilities remaining. And those will also go to zero come August 30. Revenue and expenditure report, you'll realize that the revenues are pretty high for this month. And that's due to the two months of property taxes reported. You'll, we'll see the revenue and expenditures level out come next month. And we should see that trend be comparable to last year's trend in revenue.
How many, over how many months you think for?
It's usually, there's a high month, a low month, high month, low month, until about November. And then our property tax revenue. We usually have one in December, January, but that's pretty small.
Yep.
And then as a reminder, there's no cash flow report until we have approved the budget. So you will have that introduced at the October board meeting. And then lastly, ODB Shaw, we had our best month this year. Our, this, we had our best month of this year. And we've captured about 75% of what was lost in the first three months.
Awesome. Just a quick follow-up. September's final budget, as you remember, is the second reading. We do anticipate a possible amended budget this year because that's the two funds. That depends on what we apply for it as our three. If there's projects going on, we may have to amend the budget this year. We have done that for the five years I've been here, but there's a possibility of that this year. So to make sure I brought everybody's attention. Wrap up there. Moving on to discussion items, jump into our reopening plan. Are you wanna?
Yeah, well, real quick. I'm gonna try to talk very loud, Joyce, so wherever you're at. Don, you're right there. So can you kind of zero in if you can't hear me, please? Because I know Joyce said you could. Don, this is for public comment and for the record. Doesn't need to be part of public records for the August 9th board meeting. I'm not trying to turn my back, I'll do my best that you can hear, okay? As you all know, we released our first draft of the return to school plan on Monday, August 2nd, 2021. And August 4th, it's been talked about numerous times, 2021, the governor issued executive order requiring indoor use of face coverage by student, staff, and visitors. I've updated the plan based on its executive order. So on page two, there was CDC language in there. Replace that with the language contained in, from the executive order. Replace when it requires face masking in schools. Okay, I think we're all aware of what the executive order says in there. Due to that executive order, on page eight, we had a statement that said the district intends to begin the school year mitigation level one based on the current COVID cases in our school district. That was prior to the executive order. I've replaced it with the following statement. The district intends to begin the school year mitigation level five due to the governor's current executive order and will reassess what the executive order has been allowed to aspire. I recommend you approve, approve the return to school plan for 2021, 22. And we get into the action item, as I just discussed, it was amended. I further recommend we open our schools under mitigation level five, which aligns with the current executive order, requiring indoor face coverage for all students, staff, and visitors. That's all I've got, Mr. Faith, and I gave you a copy.
Alright, if nobody's gonna jump right in, I'll jump in. Few questions that were asked, and I want to address those because you guys showed up here tonight. You do deserve answers to the questions you asked. This meeting did feel a little different. Last meeting, there was a lot of volleying that went back and forth. It wasn't all that productive. And it honestly didn't follow the proper protocol of this type of meeting, okay? So our board president does provide good leadership and he wanted to reel that back in. So we were kind of given a recommendation, hey, let's take the comments and then we'll have our discussion because that's the way it's supposed to go. It's really not supposed to be a volleying back and forth. So that's why this meeting felt different. That was, that was one of the questions that was asked. And that was a good question. Legal counsel. Rudy asked a great question about legal counsel. There has been a lot of legal counsel on, on this issue that's gone back and forth. And the last thing I read from our school attorney basically said this. He said he does not recommend you defying a state order, okay? No attorney would recommend you defy a state order. But he did say, if we chose to, if we chose to exercise our local control, he would defend us. There's also been a lot of discussion this week about individual liability of board members. And that's a real thing, okay? We don't have a definitive answer. We've heard opinions on both sides, okay? What we do know is, our school attorney has not spoken on that issue. So anybody that heard he has, that's not correct. The reason he hasn't spoken on that issue that I verified with Perry today is because we didn't ask the question. If we asked the question, we would probably find out that he advised against us going against a mandate because of the potential to open us up to a certain amount of liability. Okay, that's probably what he would say. That's probably what any attorney would say at this point is, is don't do it, okay? But I, I get- Hey Greg, pull me discussion back here, if I can comment on that within that comment. So we're voting on a reopening plan, right, tonight? I think the administration did a fantastic job putting five levels of mitigation in there, right? Ultimately, am I, am I worried about state funding? Not really. Are, are you gonna get, you're gonna get, you're gonna get your time. Can I finish my comments and then I'll pass it on? This is the board discussion, so. For the sake of course. This is, this is our time to discuss amongst the board, so. Are you talking to us, or? Well, I, I am, I mean, I'm addressing-
What's ready to finish?
I, I'm addressing everybody, the questions were asked. Good questions were asked, and in this, in this time period is when we answer those questions, okay? These, these are literally, literally what, what we're discussing, okay? Every, every, I believe every board member's gonna get their chance to speak because I don't think we have the time of it. So I, I, I think that I'd like to proceed and then I'll yield, you know, to every other member. So as, as I was, as that was asked, that, that question was asked. Yeah, we're, we're aware of the fact that there is a certain amount of potentially personal liability. Although, we all agree that it's very, very narrow. What I can tell you is I've sat in, in these meetings, meeting after meeting after meeting, as well as individual conversations with people that have come up to us and asked, what, what are you willing to do? And I've made the promise that I'm gonna do whatever we can to defend the kids. I'm gonna do whatever we can to protect our kids, including and up to mandates that are possibly illegitimate, possibly reckless. And in a county that has almost no impact from COVID, it's just reckless and it's, and it's not necessary. We have the ability at the local level. That's why Perry built that plan, to increase and decrease as we need to as our local conditions change. So I sat in this meeting, I've sat in many of these meetings and I've made a promise. And, and so I, I, I'm gonna continue with that promise. My discussion to this board is, we've made a promise, we've all sat here, and any of us who have said, we're willing to take this as far as it can go, that's what we're being asked to do tonight. We've got a lot of people that don't normally come to board meetings that have shown up to do that. So I will not vote for any reopening plan that includes that mandate. I will ask, I will ask one of two things. I will ask that we look at other ways to possibly achieve it, or we also look at any other way we could circumvent it in a defensible, responsible way so that our kids can have a normal school day. So I'll jump in. So as relates to some of the things that have come up through, you know, public comments and Greg's comments, just to hit on a few things, local control, I think, is what we're after. We've been preaching that for a long time. And unfortunately, local control is stripped away from us. We don't have choice. I'm not worried about personal risk because we're not voting on an executive order tonight. We've never voted on an executive order in the last 17 months. Never had. I'm actually encouraged that we were given the ability to come up with our own plan. Because what's based over the last 17 months, ISB and the governor have been telling us, this is what you have to do. You know, from remote learning and all those other things. So we're making baby steps and they're not steps that are certainly happening as fast as we all like to do. But ultimately, you know, our hands are tied. And I don't, I don't see a way out to, to advise Perry to do something other than follow that executive order.
So I know I'm probably not supposed to say anything right now, but at the last meeting in July, you said, Nathan, that you would go for probation, you would go for your immunity, ISB punishment, that was, and up until, yeah, up until the day before, there was new punishment. So our kids would not have to live next to school. So I don't, I don't want to be rude, but it is, you asked July, at the July meeting, you told us that. And we, I mean, you guys are in elected positions and you're not, you're not representing what we, the people, are saying we want you to do.
I, I will address it and I'm not gonna volley back and forth. I appreciate your comment, but I will get to that in full control, so. Excuse me. So as, as relates to local control, again, not worried about personal liability because we're not voting on executive order. What I am worried about, and the precedence that has been set in multiple states, including our own, is the potential removal of board members and our superintendent and his license as relates to things that have happened. So to make a very- We're trying to have a discussion in a meeting. This is, this is a meeting where the public's invited, not a public meeting. And I appreciate it, you guys had time. So the, the issue at hand with local control is there are already cases out there where all school board members defy the executive order, have been removed, superintendent's been removed, and they've appointed a state superintendent. That's not local control, and it took them two days, two business days to do it.
And they still have to wear masks, period.
So I don't know how much more we have to discuss in this. I certainly opened up candidate board. You know, I, I just think, nobody wants to wear masks.
No.
And I'm one of those who don't want to.
I don't like, but if I could say something, I can be getting into the discussion from a five on a program. I want to conduct the session. And I don't want to make a call of representation, I'm so glad it's you. Five kids, three kids in Rock Ridge, concerned about them, concerned about all the students. I did a lot of research on this and I could get real places tonight, but I won't. What I did learn today from two doctors that I follow, and they aren't just facts, they were big foundational doctors. They found that the people with lab box and get a bigger load of the virus, the virus gets it. And I think, I think, you think we're doing the right thing. I think we're doing more harm than good. And that's scary, I'm afraid, but a lot of scary things. But I think us not having enough options, kids, like you said, seven hours, maybe nine hours to school if they have an hour of us by your way. I think we're doing more harm than good. We gotta think about way past the law, way past our jobs, way past being elected. We gotta think like the total cost of waiting to see you here.
You know, sometimes I'm a man of few words unless you're my wife. But you know, we had a plan, and it was a good plan. And for the governor to come back and tell us that we're not responsible enough to go with that plan, I'm sorry, but I'm offended. And I will not vote.
We are too.
Why wasn't ISB's recommendation portion of it taken into consideration when you're making this mandate? When you're making this policy? You keep going back to, well, it's a mandate from the governor. ISB's your governing body that said, please, we recommend you create a policy. Then say you must. I, I don't understand why you're not following. ISB's your governing body, reclaim it, your governing body.
I have one question, and one question only. And that is, in all the plans that I've seen, there's never been a repercussion. What happens when my kid says, I'm not open enough to school and they just come here? Are they thrown out of school? Are they, is there any plan that the teachers have to be governing or not wearing it? They're all of a sudden the keeper of the mask? When my child takes a mask off, are they gonna be suspended? Are they going to get enough of the day? Are they gonna get thrown out of sports? There's been nothing out how I would call them. So when every kid, you, all your kids, just go into school with no mask on, what happens?
It's a great question and one that I know all of you- I can, I can promise you that question will be answered in the FAQ when he is assigned to unpack it, legal representation, and get out of this room.
Based on your guys' plan, which I was a fan of, you said level one was gonna start 10%. Have you guys ran what our rolling 14-day average is based on Northwestern University that you guys said you were gonna do? Do you guys know what that percent is? I ran it this morning, as of August 6th. The floor zip code that you guys pointed out in your return to school plan, our percent is a little over 2%. Your level one started at 10%. How do you justify going with the executive order when our numbers don't even come close to what you were gonna start at? I can say one quick thing. We're also trying to protect ourselves, as staff members, for our children, as our parents.
heard for our children, as their parents, we, you know, if you make, I commit, I remember, not for our parents, that's what we're asking.
So, Perry, Perry, this, I, I guess in, in the email that we received from Jay, where he basically recommended us to adopt, exactly as it's written. But he clearly said if we choose to go another route, he would defend us. Why does he need to state that he'll defend us, if there is not some sort of leverage there for us to choose, you know, possibly a more, a more local option or something? I mean, why, why, why does he need to say he'll defend us, if, if that's not a possibility that we can consider? I, I mean...
Do we know how many school districts have, when it comes to mandates at this point?
Almost all.
Have anyone against it?
No, I've got four, yes.
Has anybody went against it? There's three. There's Warsaw, their meeting was prior to the executive order, so watching out closely. There's, uh, Unity. Mendham Unit, and then Red Hill is the other one. And, and actually, Monmouth, Roseville, however, they had their meeting the day before the executive order came out as well. So, there are actually four that...
Well, but, but let's be fair, there's 149 that adopted the same way we did. How many days has this been? Since, since the governor's mandate came out today? Was it been four days? Five days? Okay, so, so, we're, we're gonna guess what 149 other schools are gonna do within five days. I mean, we can't assume that everybody's had a meeting scheduled.
We're actually the first one, so.
Yeah, we're, we're
So, we have some time before school starts. Why don't we, why don't we keep our finger on the pulse?
I mean, let, let's be fair, we have a plan. We adopted a plan. We all sat here, well, we didn't sit here, we sat in the library, but we all sat here and said we'd defend that plan. We said we'd take steps, okay? We said we would. Why do we need to wait for another school to do what we're being asked to do? We said we would defend the plan that we adopted. We said we would take steps. Let, let's take those steps. Let's put our money where our mouth is, and let's take those steps.
That's why we're here.
Everybody's waiting on the first thing to do it.
I, I, I understand, yeah, this is a
Public, what public comments filled right now, okay? Let us discuss, please.
All right, we're moving on to the next, the next session. Any, any board member has anything else to say? Okay, thank you.
So, for detachment.
I put out some information on detachment, and last fall, basically, this is history. Uh, last fall, inadvertently to a student's family, another family's looking for GPG property, that's a local national district. Uh, we ran that in Chesapeake County Records, actually, the taxes went to Rock Island Mileage. I'm, I'm doing my best, I'm doing my best. There's an executive order that I must follow. So, I'm sorry, I thank you for that, but it is part of what I have to do. I have to risk as well. Um, anyway, last fall, we discovered a student that didn't live in our school district, inadvertently to them. We ran the address, it belonged to Rock Island Mileage School District. Okay, somewhere else is looking another piece of property. That's how it was discovered. They said, "Well, what about my neighbor?" And then they said, "Oh, we shouldn't have told you," I guess. Well, we missed, um, at some point, one of the students registered, we missed residency, because we checked that very heavily, because your taxes paid to educate children in this district. So, that was last fall. I hadn't heard anything from them. Got a, a email, a phone call, actually, from an attorney, Jonathan Powell. Uh, the family is looking at petitioning for detachment for the Rock Island Mileage School District into our school district, uh, for their property. Uh, the attorney, again, Jonathan, I know you don't know this attorney, uh, asked if we could, uh, hold the tuition at bay, pending decision, decision of petition, or could we wait? Uh, unfortunately, we can't do that. We know they don't live in our school district, we have to charge tuition. Uh, that cost for my auditors is $8,896.96 per year for educated child in our school district. Um, I confirmed that, got back with them. Um, when I played that off, your attorney, the district attorney, he said, "You could talk to the board." Uh, the board does have to charge tuition, that's what's illegal, because money from the state falls on child. And if you wish, you could enter an agreement that families, if they are going to petition, after they pay tuition, to refund that, if they were successful in this school year. So, somewhere at the end of May, June, possibly with snow days, right, when our, when our 2021, '22 school term hits. Uh, you could do that. I relayed that to the attorney, sounded good. We talked a little bit, and it talked about payments. He discussed the month, and I said, "No, we're not gonna do it month-to-month basis. I can't recommend that to the board." But I've been other places where we've done quarterly payments, and we've taken quarterly payments. I, I would recommend that you do that. Uh, this child's been in school since kindergarten. Uh, and then they would draft an MOU with the board, if you choose to do that. Their attorney costs, of course, would have a review, uh, for ours. And if they were successful, that's great. Detachment works basically, and, and I know some people probably looked at that before, uh, this detachment from Rock Island Mileage, there's no expense to us for detachment. It's not worth us even fighting. Now, if it was the other way around, I would be recommending we fight this as far as you possibly can, because the tax, then those tax dollars go with that shot, if that makes sense. What's that? I'm sorry. Um, up until about 2:30 today, I knew of one. The attorney called back and said, "There's another family in that area, it's 106 Street West," and they're joining the petition. And their child was off to another school district, been here for quite a while. Uh, so, my recommendation is, we would do that. They've been, they've been here, if they're willing to put up the money to pay tuition, and they were successful, uh, the kids have been here. I would recommend we do that, we take it on quarterly, unless you wanna do something else, and we refund only if they're successful by the end of our school term, this whole school year. So, that's late May, early June. That's my recommendation. I'll, I'd like some feedback, so I'd get back with their attorney tomorrow.
I, I, in the month-to-month, I met, exposed this rule that quarterly doesn't sound too bad, but I'm also nervous, you know, month-to-month, or, and I understand you do really hard to make a big chunk for the year.
They're gonna have a lot of legal expenses up front.
Yes, for sure. Does any, anyone think differently, quarterly, if they're successful, and they get refunded, and they're legally part of our district anyway?
Okay, I will get back with Jonathan Powell then tomorrow at some point. I know I can talk tomorrow. Thank you for the
Uh, before we go into closed session, I'm gonna knock out, uh, 17 and 18, because it's a bus, and my normal, uh, second reading. So, can I get a motion to approve, uh, 155 passengers in school bus for Midwest Transit Equipment as presented? Steve, you have some, Tom? Tom, are you there? Greg?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Michael, yes. Can I get a motion to approve the second reading of board policy manual updates as, as presented? Second, second. Uh, Greg?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Tom? Steve?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Michael, yes. Uh, can I get a motion to adjourn to closed session, according to Chapter 5, Act 120, Section 2 of the Illinois Open Meetings Act, the executive session will be held to possibly discuss the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissals to certain employees in the district, or school building safety and security? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, all right. On 20, I'm gonna be right back. I'm gonna head to the audit room, and I will call you in a second.
I know, I got everything for you today. I will. That's true. They would have had to make that made it out.
I know.
So. Alright, we're gonna get, uh, we're gonna get started. Um, we are gonna do the roll call. You guys are gonna do that. We're not gonna put you down in eight again, so, uh, call it 8:09. We'll open a backup open session. Roll call, please.
Dog Finley?
Tom Portier.
Drew Shear.
Aaron Baugh.
Derek North.
Nathan Page.
Steve Franks.
Derek Workman.
Greg Martin.
Alright. Uh, just got a list of action items here. We'll rattle through them. Motion to approve the hiring of Allison Peterson at Rock Ridge Community School District 300, assigned to Rock Ridge Junior, uh, Junior High School as a paraprofessional for the 2021-2022, 2022 school year pending completion of all requirements. So move. Uh, Tom?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Derek?
Yes.
I vote yes. The motion to approve the hiring of Andy Say as the junior high girls' basketball coach for the 2021-2022 school year. So move.
Second.
Uh, Aaron?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Derek?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
I vote yes. The motion to approve the recommendation to transfer Kim Van de Wustein from physical education help from junior high to high school for the 2021-2022 school year.
Come on.
Second.
Uh, Tom?
Yep.
Drew?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Derek?
Yes.
I vote yes. Uh, can I get a motion to approve the recommendation to transfer Angie Watson-Hauer Cook from a three-hour position to a seven-hour position at Andalusia Elementary for the 2021-2022 school year?
Come on.
Second.
Uh, Aaron?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Tom?
Yep.
Steve?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Derek?
Yep.
I vote yes. The motion to approve, uh, the hiring of Cindy Finley at Rock Ridge 300, assigned to Andalusia Elementary as a three-hour cook for the 2021-2022 school year pending completion of all requirements.
Second.
Steve?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Tom?
Yep.
Aaron?
Yes.
Derek?
Yes.
I vote yes. The motion to approve the hiring of Lori Bausch at Rock Ridge Community School District 300, assigned to Rock Ridge Junior Senior High School as a seven-hour cook for the 2021-2022 school year pending completion of all requirements.
Come on.
Second.
Uh, Tom?
Yep.
Derek?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
I vote yes. The motion to approve the hiring of Beth Higbee at Rock Ridge Community School District 300, assigned to Elementary as a seven-hour cook for the 2021-2022 school year pending completion of all requirements. So move.
Second.
Steve?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Derek?
Yes.
I vote yes. The motion to approve the hiring of Samantha McGinnis at Rock Ridge Community School District 300, assigned to Andalusia Elementary as a paraprofessional for the 2021-2022 school year pending completion of all requirements. So move.
Second.
Greg?
Yes.
Tom?
Yep.
Steve?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Derek?
Yes.
I vote yes. The motion to approve the hiring of Melissa Joy at Rock Ridge Community School District 300, assigned to Elementary as a secretary for the 2021-2022 school year pending completion of all requirements.
Come on.
Second.
Greg?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Tom?
Yep.
Drew?
Yep.
Derek?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
I vote yes. The motion to approve the hiring of Dana DeCarroll as a high school boys' golf coach for the 2021-2022 school year. So move.
Second.
Steve?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Tom?
Yep.
Derek?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
I vote yes. The motion to approve Jay Bonsett as the volunteer high school, uh, boys' assistant golf coach for the 2021-2022 school year. So move.
Second.
Tom?
Yep.
Greg?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Derek?
Yes.
I abstain. I get a motion to approve the return to school plan 2021-2022. So move.
Second.
Greg?